Calling the meeting into order. Tonight, we have the regular session of the Black Mountain Board of Alderman for the month of November. I'd like to welcome everyone. Please turn your beepers, your cellphones off if you would please. And we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance and also remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, once again, we thank you for the gift of life and so many wonderful blessings that you bestow upon us. We thank you for the beauty of this day. Heavenly Father, we're also thankful for the many freedoms that we enjoy in this country. We now pray, Lord, that you would... We seek godly wisdom in decision-making that occurs here tonight. We pray for the leaders of our nation, that they make godly decisions. In Jesus' name, we humbly pray. Amen. Be seated. This time, I'd like to call Dory Harcharak to come forward and also bring the group with her that she has. She's with the Owen High FFA.
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Dory Harcharak, and I'm the North Carolina Western Region FFA Vice President, as well as the Charles D. Owen High School FFA Co-Vice President. And what the FFA is, is the Future Farmers of America. It's a wonderful organization that promotes leadership through agricultural education. And thank you so much for having us here again to tell you guys a little bit about some of the things that we have to come in our FFA chapter in the next few months.
Throughout the year, Owen participates in a numerous amount of CDE events, which are career development events. And they allow students to flaunt their skills that they've learned inside the classroom and as well as outside. Recently, we competed in the North Carolina State FFA Land Judging Competition. And during that competition, each student must analyze the soil characteristics for erosion, drainage, permeability, texture, and other characteristics. A student must also must identify on the plot of land treatments to recommend for best control of the land and tell the farmer how they should manage their crops for a best crop yield. And as well, you must identify special urban use hazards and environmental concerns. The team members consist of us three here tonight and Jesse Dore. And Jesse was top... He was the third highest individual in the state, and that's a big honor. And as a team, we finished second out of sixty teams. So that qualifies us to move to the national event in Oklahoma City this May.
With all of the activities that we participate in throughout the year, we require a lot of fundraising. This fall, we are running our annual fruit sale that we sell fruit from the Florida Farm Bureau.
We sell fruit from the Florida Farm Bureau, and it's going on through next week. And you can order fruit if any of you guys are interested and want to participate in this fundraiser and help support the Owen FFA. We would greatly appreciate any donations that you have. And again, thank you so much for having us here. I hope your meeting goes very well and that you have a wonderful night.
Tim, do you have any comments to make?
I think they've pretty well said it all, but Mr. Sobel has been getting on to me about getting some students out here to show what's going on with our FFA. So just to let you know that your tax dollars are well spent, that we've got lots of great activities going on at Owen High School. And again, thank you.
Before you sit down, I want to recognize a little... You guys are really doing a great job. And you know, here in the mountains, we've got a saying, "If you don't run... If you can't run with the big dogs, don't get off the porch." So I'm gonna give each of you a mayor's big dog cap. Come on up.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. Coach, we got one for you, too. Appreciate the job you're doing. This time, we have citizen comments. First name on the list is John Dewitt.
I would like to just take a moment to update you on the town square. As you can see, a lot is happening there, and we're making great progress. And we'd like to especially thank Mr. Collins for his tremendous support in getting things done regularly with all the contractors. As you know, the parking lot is complete. We will be building some rain gardens at the two entrances and one at the other where the drainage is at the site. And that will help make that little beautiful and take away those yellow-orange pillars that are standing there. The bathrooms are almost finished, as we have completed the painting, installing the tiles, have connected the electricity and the plumbing. Cement has been poured around the entrance. And then all that needs to be done now is installing some fixtures installed. This should be done very soon, hopefully before Thanksgiving, so that the people that come to town during the Thanksgiving holidays can enjoy the bathroom. And when we do the Christmas lighting, they'll have a bathroom to use when the tree is being put up, which hopefully will be before Thanksgiving. The fountains have been done by Ben Osito from Waterscapes, and we are working on some minor issues to get the maximum water flow in all three waterfalls. We have had lights there under the falls, so the lights will shine at night, lighting up the waterfalls. And we're just working out to get the... All the pumps to work together. And hopefully, that will be done this week, so they'll be running continuously. We've asked the town to help put a sign up to say, "No dogs and children allowed in the fountain," as we've noticed that dogs and children are in the fountain. So we need to put a sign up. And hopefully, those people can read, because they obviously can't understand that you don't put dogs in fountains. The beautification committee has planned the Headley Garden, which is along the side of the road. They will be planning... We've contracted with a nursery, and they will be planting shrubbery and trees, hopefully starting this week. We've also contracted with Iron Works to build a wrought iron fence along Montreat by the sidewalk, so that people won't walk on the sidewalk through the Headley Garden. We contracted with them, and they're building a nice wrought iron fence along there. Finally, as soon as the sidewalks are completed around the bend, we'll begin the process of laying bricks. They have all been engraved in South Carolina already. They're just waiting to be shipped up here. And as soon as the site is ready, and Jesse marks off the area where the bricks will be, and we get the brick layer, we will start putting the bricks, the granite and the clay bricks down, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, so that people can actually see the entrance of the town. We still have about 10,000 bricks to sell, so if people are interested in buying a brick, rusquare.com or see me, I'll be glad to take your check. Thank you all.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Elaine Lutzenheiser?
This time, we have our financial statement auditor review. Do you want to introduce them?
I will. Tonight, you've got from Gil Killian, Harold Cole, Dan Melanix, and Travis Kiefer. I'm not sure who's gonna be speaking, maybe all three, but I will turn it over to them to give a brief presentation on our financial statements and auditor's report.
I'm Harold Cole. I'm a partner in charge of this engagement and a partner with Gil Killian CPA Group. This is the second year we've done your audit, and we're delighted to be here tonight. We finished up your audit for the year ended June 30th, 2013, and we've issued four separate reports. The first of our reports is the independent auditor's report, which you can find on pages one through three, the comprehensive annual financial report. It's the big one. And happy to report that it's an unmodified report, which means that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. The second report is on your internal controls. That can be found on page 71 of the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Now, this is not an opinion on the town's internal controls. We have to review your internal controls in a limited way to determine what kind of audit procedures we need to perform. But at the same time, if we run across any significant weaknesses or deficiencies in your internal controls, we're gonna report those to you. And then, under separate cover, the one titled Required Communications, here's where we're required to report certain matters to the board. And then, the last document we have is our management letter, which is a recommendation for various... For improvements that we saw to your internal controls. And you've received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for two years now, and we believe that this report will qualify for that again. So Dan Mullinix is gonna tell you a little bit about some financial highlights of the financial statements.
Thank you, Harold. First, I want to thank Matt and Dean for working with us with the audit. It's been a pleasure experience working with them and all the staff of the town. If you ever heard the author, Jim Collins, he writes about how companies and organizations thrive. In one of his books, he wrote "Good to Great." He says, "Great vision without great people is irrelevant." And one thing is, in his books, he talks about employees. And I want to talk about Dean, is you're very lucky to have a knowledgeable, very self-motivated financial director in your town. During the audit, and for example, all our suggestions last year, pretty much all of them, he's gone through and implemented them or figured out ways to use them for the best benefit of the town. When we came to the audit, all the supporting documentation was provided. It was clear that he understood at the time, when we asked him questions, where the town stood financially. And performed... You could tell he performed significant analysis of various accounts. Some towns we go to, that might not be the case. It might take a week. But most of the time, the information was readily available, which is a good thing. Another thing is, during the audit, there was no audit adjustments for errors. The only adjustments we worked with him on was to book government-wide financials to go from fund accounting to full accrual accounting, which is typical for towns. The next thing, I'm just to go over some financial highlights with your financial statements. Pages four, and this is the thicker document, pages four through 11 is management's discussion and analysis. And this is prepared by Dean. And what this is, is this is for your non-accounting folks, and it pretty much describes the town and the activity during the year. And spend some time later and read through that, and you can kind of see a snapshot of what occurred during the year. If you turn to page 15, this is your... This is your general fund, and this is what most town councils are concerned about. Your general fund... Fund balance increased $606,000 for the year, which is positive. Your unassigned fund balance is at forty percent of 40.8% of your annual expenditures, which equates to about 4.8 months a year of your expenditures. Typically, the LGC wants you to be between the three- and six-month range, and you're right there. But the town's policy is have a minimum fund balance of 30.5%. So you are approximately about, I think, about $650,000 above what your minimum fund balance is. And one good reason to have a good fund balance is, one, during slow times, it might have... It helps with your cash situation, but also it helps if you have future... If you go out for future GO bonds or financing. The higher that percentage is, typically, the lower your rate will be on your interest rates. So that's a good positive thing. Your property tax revenue, pages 53 and 54 is statistics on your property taxes and collections. Just excluding motor vehicles, your property tax collection rate was 99.2%. The state average during the previous year was 98.3, so you're above the state average. Property taxes this year, and as you probably anticipated, increased about $150,000, and that was mainly due to the Ingalls Distribution Center going online. Your water fund... Cash position increased about $11,000. We expected it to be about consistent to the same, but your cash flow from your water fund, it was $280,000 of positive cash flow before you paid off debt. So you had enough cash from your operations on your water fund to pay off your debt and to pay for your capital projects during the year. So I'm gonna turn this over to Travis, and he'll just talk about general communication document and also the management letter.
Yeah, I've got the smaller document here. There's two letters in here, as Harold briefly mentioned already. One is Required Auditor Communications to the Board, and the second's a management letter. In the Required Auditor Communications, there's several things in here which are all fairly standard. We discussed the most sensitive estimates that we rely on during the audit, and in this case, there were depreciation allowances for uncollectible receivables and management's estimate of the value of certain assets and liabilities in the golf course fund that will be transferred back to the town at the end of the management agreement with Billy Casper-Golf. Those are the three estimates that were the most sensitive to our audit procedures. The rest of this letter, there's not a whole lot of note in here. We noted that we encountered no difficulties when performing the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements. We worked with Dean on several closing type entries, as Dan's already mentioned. Those were all made and nothing left uncorrected. We had no disagreements with management, and for purposes of this letter, that means that there were no audit-related issues that went unsettled or weren't taken care of to our satisfaction. We've included a copy of your management representation letter, which is a letter written from the town to us, basically saying that you've given us access to all your information and everything we've asked for. And that's basically it for this first letter. Feel free to read it at your leisure, and if any questions come up, we'll be happy to answer them at that point. But it's mostly standard information that we're required to report. The second letter, which is on page four of the smaller document, is our management letter. And as Harold's already mentioned, we consider internal control to the extent necessary to design appropriate audit procedures, but we don't express an opinion on your internal control. There was one minor budget overage that was required to be reported in the compliance section of the report. The only other suggestion that we have relates to a recommendation we made last year regarding the town's policy on issuing P-cards to all full-time employees. We'll again ask that the town review that policy and determine if that's the best way forward. And we'd also like to commend Dean. Dan briefly mentioned that a lot of our recommendations from last year were implemented. Those included such things as putting in a vendor approval system for new vendors, reviewing the list of current vendors to make sure that they are all still being used, and taking them off the list if they're not. Having department heads consistently sign off and approve expenditures for their department, and improving the controls and approval process around the use of P-cards. We saw a really good improvement in all those areas this year that we asked for Dean to take a look at last year. And I think that's about it, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions from the board? As you audit throughout the state, I'm sure, but this is a general question. I know in the financial sector, we're seeing more and more requirements on compliance. Are you seeing that come through to municipalities?
Yeah, there are a lot of compliance requirements. They become more onerous when you start reaching real high levels of grant funding. So they're really, really important for counties right now, especially in towns and municipalities that get a lot of grants, like for capital improvements, that sort of thing. But yeah, the compliance environment's definitely increasing.
More workload.
Yeah.
Great report, guys. Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it. Next, you've got the watershed... Oh, I'm sorry. We do need a motion to accept the...
Motion to accept the audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2013, as presented with thanks to Gil Killian CPA Group and the Finance Department staff. Ask for a motion.
Send them in.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries five up. This time, we'll have...
Jesse Gardner come and speak, and we've been doing an assessment of water capacity with the wells in the watershed, and Jesse's gonna give you an update on that.
Mayor, Board of Alderman, appreciate the chance to come and sort of give you an update on the progress we've made here. I guess Matt and Dean and Jamie and I think Mark, myself, about probably second quarter of the year, sort of engaged each other and set an objective to... You know, the Black Mountain watershed is a valuable asset to this town, and we've talked about other sources of water in the past together. And the objective of us working together was to make sure we maximize our potential within the watershed itself. And just as I got engaged with the town to do some capacity analysis work, we ended up having two well pumps actually go down. They failed. And so that sort of went from... Jumped right into the fire of things is... And hopefully, you have the worksheet capacity analysis in front of you. But essentially, those two wells were two of... Or well pumps were two of our oldest well pumps, and were the top... One was the number-one guy that we wanted to investigate and look at replacing anyways. And the second one was in the top, I think, five, if we were to go on a ranking. And so what you have in front of you is what we've done and the results from replacing those two well pumps. And again, to... The objective is, let's... Before we, I think, we have looked at drilling wells elsewhere, we wanted to make sure we're getting the maximum amount of water out of that watershed. And so going down the well capacity analysis, first well we replaced was well pump number four. And give you overall sense, we have ten wells in the watershed, and we have two wells outside of the watershed. So well pump number four, which is within the watershed, it went down, I think, in March or April timeframe. And we had a lag of two to three weeks where we're not producing water. Just went down. It takes that time to order a pump, get installed, and get it back up and running. It was operating at around 53,000 gallons per day. Once we sized it and got a drawdown test and ran it through a full month of pump production, we increased well water from that well itself by 10,000 gallons a day, which, if you extrapolate that out per year, is nearly three and a half million gallons of water per year. We anticipated we'd get a benefit for that, because that well was, I think, about a 15-horsepower well pump, and it had been throttled during... Back in the day, it was probably 25 years old, is what Mark Watts' best guess was. And it was actually... They knew it was halfway running at half-capacity. They had a gate valve choking it down to make sure it didn't overdraw the water out, which is... It can be the case that if you pull too much water out, well, the well itself runs dry, damages the pump. So a long time ago, they used to put a gate valve in, throttle the head, make sure it operates now. Newer pumps and newer control systems allow you to, you know, set the operating range, and you have a lot more control over it. So this was our number... We knew we were gonna have a winner with this pump, and so we've netted a 10,000 gallon per day increase for well pump number four. The other well pump that went down was well number 18. We did get a 5,000 gallon per day upgrade on that. That was just probably... I think that pump went in at the same size, but we're just getting a little better yield off it. So combined together, replace two well pumps, and we gained 15,000 gallons per day out of the watershed. Together, that's five and a half million gallons per year. So from a water production standpoint, that's a summary from the two, just from a yield standpoint or capacity standpoint. At the bottom half, I sort of just say, "What does this mean in dollar figures?" First figure I have is our purchase rate from the city of Asheville. It's listed as $1.31 here, ballpark, and I talked with Dean a little before this meeting. That varies a little bit, and he has some figures that might be slightly higher than that. So my quick estimate might be slightly conservative, but just, you know, for every gallon we produce, that's a gallon I'm assuming we're not purchasing from the city of Asheville, if our demand stays the same. So, you know, five and a half million gallons over a year saves the town of Black Mountain roughly $7,000 in purchasing water from the city. If Dean's figures are slightly higher, 10% higher, you know, $7,500. The other aspect I wanted to look at was power savings. I pulled two months meter readings. One pump, I had significant savings on the actual bigger well pump. We were saving nearly $400 a month in electricity costs. The other figure, we were maybe $10 to $15 more per month. And so, but overall, you know, over an entire year, we saved around $1,000 in electricity costs. So we're looking at approximately $8,200 in net savings through the year. And if you take the investment of upgrading the well pump for two pumps and the dollar figure, you know, this improvement pays itself off just in a cost basis within about four years. So I thought the results spoke for themselves, that staff and I, Jamie and Mark and I, have identified probably two to five other candidates that are well worth investing on or investing in and probably replacing the pumps, or at least doing the... Looking into replacing the pumps. You know, right now, I think we're averaging nearly between 100 and 125,000 gallons per day from the city of Asheville. That's our purchase. You know, the more water we produce, the less water we have to buy from the city of Asheville currently, and they essentially pay for themselves. Also, I think some of these other pumps that we've identified are getting near their lifespan, you know. Getting 25 years out of a well pump is great, but, you know, realistically, they probably have lifespans of 15 years, and we need to probably be budgeting and looking at them on a new pump per year or two pumps per year cycle and get that cycle produced and regimented for the future. So that's sort of just a brief summary of our results. I'll be glad to entertain any questions from any of the board members.
Is most of the efficiency there just coming from just more efficient pumps, the windings on the pumps and the bearings that they have in there?
Yes, there's efficiency in the technology of the pumps that are made, and there's efficiency in how they used to do drawdown tests and size pumps based off the yield of the well. There's more efficiency of getting something... A better accurate number, as opposed to they used to catch water in a bucket and time it and see how many gallons per minute and get the closest pump. So with the technology and the... Yeah, the technology's improved efficiencies a lot. Not a great deal to just from a power basis. I wouldn't necessarily look at it from a power basis. I'd look at it from a control basis that we can tell a pump... I can oversize a pump, which, I mean, the idea is to get as much water out of the ground as you can. I can oversize a pump, but have the controls to, say, pump 85% of that, because that's where you... That's where you... percent of that, because that's where you, uh, that's where you operate the most efficiency, or, of the most efficient, as opposed to turn a gate valve and, and try to, and try to overwork the pump to back it into the right gallons per minute. So the controls is what come the farthest, if that makes sense.
Well, when I'm, when I'm thinking about this, we, we have this reservoir, if, I would assume it's a reservoir under, under, that we're into, or maybe into a, into a big stream or something. Uh, but if you were to increase that production, you've increased that production by ten thousand gallons, uh, a day, all right, is there...
And, and we made sure to see no reduction in the other wells' yields, too.
Okay, yeah, that would be part of it. And also, too, just the fact that, I'm just wondering over period of time, does that bring that reservoir down? How do you, I mean, obviously you can't look under the ground and see exactly how much that we, that we have, have there. We're increasing our production by ten thousand gallons, that's, that's, that's right, and hopefully it'll continue on forever. But how would you know if that reservoir's slowly drawing down because you're pulling that much?
Um, you know, ideally, uh, as you size well pumps, it's all based off, uh, a drawdown test before you actually put a well pump in and draw that aquifer down, and do it for twenty-four hours, and, and then you see what the, the, that, uh, that production rate is, sixty-three gallons per minute. It eventually, it'll, it'll settle out, and it'll hit an equilibrium that, that, that aquifer's producing sixty-three gallons per minute. It's not necessarily a pond of water down there, it's just a constant stream, and as long as I hit that constant stream or stay slightly under it, you know, my water level should stay constant. Uh, you don't want, you don't want to oversize it and have your well pump draw the water all the way down, cut itself off, and it come back up. And so, that's, the state has regulations, pub, the state has regulations on the drawdown test, the twenty-four hour drawdown timeframe that you have to pay somebody twenty, to sit out there and take readings for twenty-four hours, and then they also review how it, uh, once you cut the well pump off, how it fills back up, uh, and so...
I mean, well, just a question I had, I mean, obviously you guys, you're the engineers. One other question I did have, I was, you know, the savings are great, but I did hear you say four hundred dollars a month savings on the power?
On one well pump, the one well pump was well, that one well pump was like a fifteen horsepower well pump, and then we end up reducing the size but getting more, uh, water out of it.
Okay, now, the only reason I'm saying is that, is that, if it's four hundred dollars a month, I mean, that's five thousand a year.
Yeah, I think the other one was about a hundred dollars more or something like that. Didn't edit out.
I'm just trying to look at the, at, at these figures here, I forgot. See, there it is. Uh, if the total net savings then is eight thousand, and we're saving, you know, roughly from the city of Asheville, seven, why wouldn't that be fifteen? I mean, twelve, I mean, why wouldn't it be five thousand?
My yearly estimated power savings is a thousand. Maybe, uh, maybe four hundred's a little high on that one pump, maybe it was two hundred dollars. Been a while since I've used these numbers, but...
When I, when I heard that, that figure, I was just looking at this and just, okay. Anyway, great. One other thing, on the, on the south side there, uh, I'm, I'm sure you and Jamie and him has talked about putting, possibly we could go over there and possibly put in another well, get on that headwaters of the Catawba. Uh, any thoughts?
South side of the watershed?
Yeah, on that finger of land that we have that goes over, I think it's about eight, eighty acres on the south side of Dunsmore Cove. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, I mean, there, there's tons of possibilities to get, I mean, drill a new well, I think you, the things that have to go into that is getting the water back to where, where we have infrastructure today, and so if you're crossing all the way over the, the mountain, you're gonna have to drag water lines all the way back, uh, but, and also the head conditions, but...
But, but it's possible.
Absolutely, it's a possibility.
Okay, all right, good enough, thanks. Thank you, Jesse. We're really blessed here to have the water we have. There's a greater capacity of water in Botham County than there was twenty-five years ago.
Concerned, Jim? Yes, sir. Um, you've got, uh, adoption of minutes from an agenda workshop, a closed session, the regular session, and a special call meeting that we had in the last month. You've got a budget amendment for the, uh, Lake Tomahawk Dam project. If you recall in our budget for this, this year, we set aside fifty thousand dollars in a capital reserve fund. Um, in, uh, in two thousand and eleven, the state had told us that there were some repairs needed to be made to the dam, some maintenance issues, we have, uh, it's, it's time to make those, um, to address those issues, and we want to do a budget amendment, put the money in the general fund. Uh, part, later in the, uh, in the agenda tonight, we have a contract with W.K. Dixon to oversee that project and also to do the, uh, the required, um, maintenance that would be part of that, uh, part of that work, but this is the budget amendment for that, and like I said, that's part of the capital reserve that you all had already budgeted for. Then you've got a budget amendment, um, for radios for the fire department, we are part of a, a, um, regional assistance firefighters grant that was awarded, it, it's awarded through the Skyland Fire Department, but that's just the recipient of it. Um, what, what it amounts to is, is new radios, new handheld radios, uh, in the range of ninety-three thousand dollars worth of radios for our fire department at a cost, the, it's an eighty-twenty grant, so at a cost of nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars to us, um, to make that replacement. If you recall, a few months ago, we had a, a similar, um, type breakdown and, and for, for radios for the police department, this is, this is, uh, will make us consistent with the county and all emergency services with new radios, I think it's a great opportunity for us, but you, we have a budget amendment from the fund balance for nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars to pursue those, to pursue that grant. Um, and then you've got a, uh, proposal to adopt a resolution designating, um, myself and Dean Luby as agents for FEMA assistance in July of this year. The storms in that month were, were considered a disaster for western North Carolina, we have two projects that qualify for aid, um, uh, stormwater and street work on Westview Drive and, uh, erosion control issues that we had on Flat Creek Greenway, both, all that work has been done, but we want to submit the, obviously, the cost for that and have that reimbursed, you're probably looking somewhere in the range of fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars. I don't, we don't have the numbers back yet from FEMA, we turn our information into them of, of what our reimbursement will be, but this is a resolution to, uh, to designate applicants, agents for, uh, um, for that project. And that is all that you have under the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve consent items, consent items A through D as presented?
I start then.
In discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five up. This time we'll have open precision comments, that's individuals requesting to address the board regarding specific new business or unfinished items that are listed on the agenda. Comments, anyone speak, we'll be leaving in three minutes. This time Elaine Lutsenheiser?
Elaine Lutsenheiser, Fort Tenevina Road. I'd like to speak against the open container policy that you're gonna consider tonight. I think that the lesson that, that Asheville learned on open containers for Belcher was negative as far as family participation was concerned, and it's not gonna be what, what a couple of days, so, or Saturday. I don't think that it's necessary to have open containers during that concert, I think they can drink inside the facilities and keep the alcohol off the street. I'm not opposed to drinking, I'm just opposed to drinking on the street where the people are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in regard to these items? There being none? New business?
Um, under your new business, you have a, a request, this, this request actually comes from, uh, um, a group called Black Mountain Bar Businesses Arts and Restaurants, they're a, uh, five oh one C six nonprofit in town, kind of dedicated themselves to, uh, to, um, promoting the, uh, arts and restaurants and businesses downtown. They are proposing a, uh, an event on, um, May seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, it's a one-day art and music festival, the idea of the event is to close off Cherry Street, um, have arts and crafts from ten AM to six PM for local independent artists, and from six PM to ten PM, they would have live music on a stage at the bottom of Cherry Street with a large headliner act. And the, the request, of course, as you know, our ordinance for the town now prohibits, uh, open containers and alcohol on, um, town property, uh, except for the, at the golf course and at the Lakeview Center. The request then is to, is, is to allow, um, allow, we'd have to amend our ordinance, but to allow this event to, um, serve alcohol at the event openly on Cherry Street, it would be closed, I think it, it, that part wouldn't start until after, um, from, from six to ten, is that right, John? Six to ten. So that, there's, there's a, obviously, an arts and crafts part, before that, aft, from, at six o'clock, the, the, um, alcohol would be allowed to be, um, contained and controlled, and, uh, and if it was approved, of course, we'd have to meet with the police chief and, and, and work out the details of, uh, of that arrangement, but, but before you can move forward with that, you have to authorize, um, us to, to entertain that as, as a, as an amendment to our ordinance currently.
Okay. Motion to allow alcoholic beverages at bars event on Cherry Street scheduled for Saturday, May seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen.
I would like to make that motion.
Or is a motion on the floor is in discussion? Yeah, I'll speak in favor of it, I mean, we're looking at one day, one day, four hours a year, I mean, that's it, they're just asking just for the one time, so I'm, you know, voting favor of it. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Uh, you know, I've got no problem with the arts and crafts and, and, and doing that, got no problem with, with having a band in town, I mean, we, uh, we do that when we're having the, uh, Sowerwood Festival. What my fear is, was, is the doors that this can open for other venues down the road, what's next? And I just doesn't, I, thinking about it, I don't think it, it fits Black Mountain's character and the flavor of the, of, of the town. And, um, I, I just don't wanna open those doors, and so I'll be voting no.
Any other discussion?
I would agree, I think it's, um, we're looking to doing more family oriented type things here in the town, and I think would be really detrimental, um, why can't we have fun without alcohol?
If I could, Mayor, I'd, I'd like to agree with, uh, what Don and, and Carlos have said to some extent. I, I want to, I want to help businesses and grow businesses here in town and, and make this a, a vibrant economic community, but when you talk to business owners on Cherry Street, you get a very distinct sense that it's not something that they're in favor of. And for me personally, they're the people that are affected by it, they're worried about picking up trash the next day, things like that. It, if they feel like it's going to be more of a hindrance than a help, I, I think that deserves our attention and should be heavily considered.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those oppose the motion, right hand. Motion defeated three, two. Next item is the contract to oversee repairs to Lake Tomahawk.
Yes, sir, is, that, this coincides with the, with the budget amendment that you approved earlier, the, um, this is a contract with W.K. Dixon, we've been, uh, in discussions with them frankly since two thousand and eleven to oversee this project, though the contract cost, um, is roughly thirty-four thousand dollars, that is to, that's to, to do it, to do a full inspection, oversee the, uh, the work that needs to be done, send a, a proposal and a plan to, uh, Department of Environment and Natural Resources to, uh, to walk through that process with them, get the approvals that we need from the state, and then to check off on the project when it's completed.
A motion to approve contract with W.K. Dixon to address the North Carolina Dinner Dam safety, notice of inspection with maintenance.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion, is there any discussion? Yeah, just, do you have some idea what you think it's gonna be, what the cost, actual construction cost to be to remove those over a hundred trees down there?
Yeah.
Some of them not so little.
Um, yes, and I, um, and I may call on Jamie here briefly, but we, we've gone out and got a quote for that portion of it, and you're looking at, you're looking at somewhere between, I think, thirty-five hundred, maybe, and five thousand dollars to do that, I'm actually very amazed at what the cost is.
We have fifty-four trees.
Right.
Could be more, could be a little less, if it being fifty-four trees. If we join with them and help remove the trees, they will take down the fifty-four trees for thirty-five hundred dollars.
Jeez.
If, which is not to do it, if there's, um, if we're busy and can't help or something comes up, they will remove them and we won't even have to touch them for a second.
And that's really mostly of, of the work that, that, that we're discussing, now it has to be, um, certified by an engineer, they gotta stand out there and watch it done because it, you know, cutting the trees down is, uh, is what it is, but then the removal of the stumps, the backfield, that sort of work is where the, is, is where the oversight portion of it is, but that's include, that, that's all part of, that's all part of this process. We, we feel comfortable that within the fifty thousand dollars that, that was allocated in the budget, that, uh, between the, between the engineering and, and this amount, we should be fine.
Thanks. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Don't scare me there, folks. Unfinished business? Uh, this is in regard to the Billy Casper Golf Management Contract, uh, Dean Luby and, uh, Matt, our town manager and I met with those folks, this time I'd like Dean to come forward if he would and, and give the financial, uh, financial reporting on those folks.
Mayor and board, I'm happy to speak in front of you tonight. Uh, we just received the financial results for Billy Casper through October two thousand and thirteen, um, which is their four months into this fiscal year, and they, they actually have some pretty complex budgeting, so they budget by month, so they, so they're smart enough to know when some good months are gonna be and when some slow months are gonna be. Through October, they, they've budgeted a total of an eight thousand dollar loss for the first four months of the year, and they're currently at a seventy thousand dollar loss, their actual results show. That brings their life to date total of a two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar loss through twenty-six months. Um, their, their loss was eleven thousand dollars it came to in October. I, th, those are the results coming from their financial statements, their financial statements, they include, uh, some capital items like debt payments on, on, uh, the golf carts, but they do not include things like depreciation. So for some of you folks, I've, I've taken their results and I've tur, turned them into what we call gap numbers, generally accepted accounting principles, where I, what I do is I take out, I adjust their numbers to make them more of an apples-to-apples comparison with our numbers. Uh, when I do that, for, for their numbers, for the first four months, they show a fifty-three thousand dollar loss. Last fiscal year, I don't know that this has really been reported, their, their loss came out at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year thirteen, when I take their numbers and adjust them into our gap numbers. That's about all I have, I, I mean, I have a lot of other information, if you have specific questions, I can...
Anyone have specific questions of Dean? This, uh, this, these losses that you're speaking about, the seventy thousand, like the eight, eleven thousand dollar in, in, in October, that includes our having to pay that six thousand dollars a month, correct?
That, that's included in there, probably about twenty-five thousand of it is that, is that amount.
Okay. And so the seventy thousand loss that you, that you speak of, that is from what month? What for?
That's from July first through October thirtieth, for, for the four months there.
July first through October.
And in some ways, you can kind of think that three of those months are pretty good months for the golf course, you know, for revenues and expenses, just by weather, the nature of the weather here in Black Mountain.
Yeah, because, I mean, July was certainly not a good month, but, but August, September, October had been pretty good.
July with the rain, sure, yeah, but I think August and September were a little drier.
Yeah. They asked for fifty thousand dollars into their cash flow, and when you look at their finances, financials, they've got a hundred and twenty thousand plus in payables.
That's correct.
They lost a hundred and twenty thousand already in cash flow, and you've got three months coming up here that's gonna show, show losses.
Yeah, yeah, we would need to probably pay close to two hundred thousand to grab them to clear up the payables and to keep their cash flow positive until March or whenever plague would pick up.
When I, when we met with them, I used the number two fifty, and they... When we met with them, I used the number 250, and they didn't dispute it.
Yeah, I could be being a little conservative with the 200 number.
I think you're not talking about a $50,000 advance to them. I think you're really talking about a quarter of a million dollars, and you're sitting here now with a $254,000 loss already.
Well, yeah, the $50,000, I think, was just to keep their head above water for the short term. No, it is important to sort of not add their total loss and this 250 that you're, we don't want to add both of those numbers together.
Carrying one there to another year.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, their projections that they have, like the $8,000 loss for the first four months, were those projected based upon the rounds played, or what were they projected upon?
I think rounds played would be a part of that. Their budget, actually, in fiscal year 13, they basically budgeted a break-even budget revenues and expenses. They ended up quite a bit off on that for the condition of the course in the first part of the year, and then the weather in June or May and June of this year that we're in. This year, they've actually budgeted an $80,000 loss, and a large part of that would be based on number of rounds. Now, as time goes on, I think Billy Casper would admit they get a little wiser about how to budget for our course. They're very smart golf people, but all courses are a little different. So, you know, the first year, maybe even the second year for us, I'm sure they did their best job in budgeting, but as time goes on, they become, you know, wiser about our specific course, which is why they may have an $80,000 loss for this fiscal year 14.
If you go back to last year, I think for those first three months going into the new year, they had about a, what, $25,000 profit or more?
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, that's an interesting, that's an interesting point. Last year, even with their $121,000 loss, they actually made $25,000 in the first three months. So the rest of the year, they lost $145.
Which is why, I was going to interrupt you, which is why our projection for going forward doesn't look, doesn't look positive because they didn't make, they didn't make that amount.
Why, because in last year, so you're going to suffer greater loss this year.
I would feel safe in, I mean, last year, the bottom line is, last year, in the last nine months, they lost $145,000, and they ended up with $120,000 loss because of, they made a little money in the first three months. In these first three months, they've lost close to $60,000.
That $80,000 loss, that, I'm assuming, is taking the, their management fee out of those numbers, and so we're basically, what they're projecting is we're going to lose basically what we're paying them. Is that a fair statement?
I think that's, yeah, yeah, their $80,000 budgeted loss certainly includes their management fee. So, and their management fee, when you add in some travel and stuff, it gets close to $80,000.
So, don't let me put words in your mouth, but if we weren't paying them the 80, or the 70, $8,000, golf course would be basically break-even. If, according to their budgeted numbers, what they're doing.
According to their budgeted numbers, right.
Yeah, their projections will be wrong by this point in the year.
They have, yes. Now, even if that had happened, if we had not paid anything to them, they still would have shown a $35,000 loss for these first three months.
I'm really concerned about this $120,000 in past due payables.
What does that consist of, Carl? Yeah, I mean, that what's?
Yeah, it's broken down about half of it is them.
No, 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 about, of the 120, I'd say about 75 of it is us.
Right, but cart payments.
Yeah.
And then I guess there's, if there's three months, four months, that's them, then there's some smaller vendors.
Yeah, then there's, then they owe themselves actually 20 or so, but then there's some other smaller vendors for maybe 25.
We, when we met with them, they didn't have any ideas about how to increase revenues or offset any expenses. And talking to them about negotiation with the contract, they really had no comment on that as far as a starting point with them. That's where we stand with our. Do you have anything to add to that, Matt?
No, that's a reflection of the, you know, of the meeting that we had with them the other week, certainly.
I'd just like to add some comments, if I could. I mean, and these are my reasons for, as everyone knows, I've said in the beginning, we should have got a divorce from them from day one, and I'm of the opinion that we need to let them go now. And according to the contract, they were not keeping up the creek banks, and I've got listed here, the six holes especially. Number two, they were cutting the grass way, way too close during the drought conditions, thus weakening the grass ability to survive. Not watering the greens during the hot conditions. Not aerating the greens properly. Not controlling the migration of fungus, brown spots. They had to stop play on number five due to dead areas and then go ahead and then redo that whole green, which we had to pay for. And they just set up some kind of a small little area down in the front there where they just went ahead and just mowed it down and stuck a, stuck a hole in the ground, put a flag, flag pin in there. Had to stop play on number 16 due to, due to dead areas. Not maintaining existing tee boxes, rotating them to encourage proper rehabilitation of unused areas. Not expanding the tee boxes to support more play and less wear and tear. Not utilizing the large tee box on number 17 to keep the distance at 747, which, for those of y'all who don't realize, that was the longest hole in the world for a long, long time. But unfortunately, the back tee box, which gave us that distance of 747, they never opened back up. Failure to maintain and grow new grass in heavily played areas like the approach to 616. Failure to keep the greens as large as possible. They reduced the size of the greens by the mowing that they were, that they were doing. Failure to maintain the croquet court. Failure to maintain the golf carts on a regular maintenance schedule, thus increasing the reliability. And of course, inconvenience to golfers and slow, slow play due to the carts breaking down. Failure to meet financial goals of the course, and of course, the 19th hole fiasco. Failure to provide inadequate selection of pro shop golf equipment. Failure to not only increase play, but a reduction in play due to poor, poor conditions. Failure to deliver what they promised. Failure to graph the course and provide an in-depth analysis of soil composition, particulate matter content, the range of permeability, the trace element content of each tee box, green and fairway. They relied on one size fits all. Those are my reasons that I think we ought to get rid of Billy Casper.
Holy comments? I'd make reference to page 11 of the contract. Item D, license of default. To defaulting party does not cure the default within the grace period provided in paragraph nasty above. The other party may terminate this agreement on 30 days. Written notice to other party pursuant to all rights and remedies available in law and equity, including payment of cured amounts pursuant to page 7 hereof. Hearing Mr. Sobel's list of defaults, would this not apply, or should it not have applied to remedy those defaults, and therefore will find the contract in default and give us grounds for termination?
Where's our attorney?
This is Carl. Carl, this is properly read, these provisions, because these have been happening over time, and it gets a bit tricky when you go to them and say, okay, here's all the things you're doing wrong, you've got to fix those now, and they've got their window of time to make the repair. And so if you want to terminate on that basis, you put those things in front of them, give them that window of time, and if they don't cure them, then you can terminate the contract. The upside of using that approach, obviously, is we walk away without them asking damages of us, the balance on the contract. The downside, of course, is the risk and time involved. If they claim that these things are not wrong, we go to battle over it. But there are a number of factors to be considered. But that is what the contract says.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not going to sit here and try to advocate for the contract or not. As we all know in this town, I was one of three who voted for the contract, and I've been reminded of that constantly from day one. But, you know, that's big skin here and there. But the point being is, I do look at the numbers. I hear what Dean's saying tonight, and they do concern me. I mean, we're still in a very, very tight economic conditions in this whole country. I was, and anybody who's got an iPhone, you can Google it and see the amount of golf play that's down in this country. I mean, golf play is off to almost 5% countrywide, and a lot of things are attributed to that. What I would like to see is, you know, based upon their projected budget, what were they projecting the number of rounds to be played, and how many rounds were actually played? And Brent, maybe you can help us, help us out with that.
I would have to look at my MRR, but, I mean, we're way behind on rounds.
Yeah, second, third year, second year, I guess, was, they projected close to 30,000.
I can tell you from the first year, from the first budget year, basically, when we did the, when we did the next budget, we increased every, every category by 2% to 3%. So that's how that, this past budget came about, and that's why it's a little bit closer. But that was also not factored in, the fact that it was going to rain 50 inches from January to August.
And again, we had one of the, this part of the whole United States had the worst rain in this whole, in the whole country this year, you know, record rainfall. Carl, I mean, what, when you say they weren't open to negotiations, could we, would it be possible to go back to the table with them, or what do you think?
Well, you seem to have a better relationship with them than the rest of us. Would you like to do that?
Well, I'm not a businessman. I put it in you in that you're being a businessman, you're a financial person.
I met with them. They didn't negotiate.
They were, they refused to negotiate?
They refused to give us a starting point.
Dean, Matt, any suggestions?
Well, except that, I mean, I think, like the mayor said, we, you know, we met with them, they didn't, they didn't have any alternatives to the contract. I do think, you know, I think the reason that we've come back tonight is to, to see if there are alternatives to the contract, or what the, what the direction of the board is to move forward with the contract as it stands now. So when we, when we met with them, the discussion was clear that, that if they, that if we wanted to get away from the contract, they, they were going to use the language of the contract as their guidelines for that. And so from that, we've come back here tonight to see if, to see what the, what the direction of the board is, or how we pursue that.
And if I were in their shoes, and I've said this to several people, that's exactly what I would have told you and Carl. If I had that contract and it says buyout is, is pay me this amount, that's exactly what I'd tell you, but that's their step one.
My feeling is they'll negotiate a little on the fee for a period of time, but then you'll have to make it up by extending the length of the contract. That's just my personal feeling. Now, that, that was not said by them, but it has been done in the past by them.
I'd like to see this board give Carl the authorization to go negotiate setting an upper limit on the fee that we would pay them for a buyout.
I think, I think that would have to be done in the executive session. That'd be illegal.
I think you're at the point where you need to go to a closed session, consult counsel on that.
Thank you.
But, and again, when we met with them, we had no authority to, to give a, set them out, or this is what we're going to do. We just sat down with them and talked, but we wanted out of it. And did they have anything to offer, which they did.
By us not providing the $50,000 within the five-day period, what did that do, Matt?
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't done anything yet, you know, obviously, and Brent may speak to this, I mean, their cash flow is going to, is terribly poor, and they're, and so they asked for that, you know, you all have pointed out that, you know, their payables are at the range of $120,000. That was just an infusion to try to give them something for a month or so. So, so in terms of their cash flow, I would venture a guess that it's, that it's poor. In terms of the contract, the contract does, and I don't want to overstep here once you tell me if I'm wrong, but the contract does obligate us to, to keep working capital for them if there's a point, and it also, on the same time, allows Billy Casper Golf to put that money in to their working capital fund. If we haven't, if we haven't done that in a timely fashion, and then we would still owe that back to them at some later date. Obviously, I think that what you're referring to is the fact that at some point, that's considered possibly an issue for default, but there's, there's notification and periods of remedy like Mr. Snead had talked about, and those, and so there's still a long process for that. What we're talking about now, basically, for them is the, is the level of cash flow they have to, to maintain and carry out their daily operations.
Any other discussion? Town attorneys, if you've got some?
I have one.
Town manager?
Nothing to add.
The board have any comments at this time? Now, guys, I should be hearing from a couple of you about how, three of you have been re-elected. You need to thank the people out there. There being nothing else, I'll entertain a motion that we're going to close session to discuss litigation matters as permitted in North Carolina General Statute 1431818.3, and to discuss real property by purchase, option, exchange, or leases as permitted in North Carolina General Statute 143318.11.
And Mayor, if, I don't recall which subsection, but you're going to add to that just to consult counsel.
I'll make that motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you for being here, folks. We'll probably be in this session for just a period of time.